The order, the first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda with some additions.
Move for approval with the additions.
Chair, just to clarify, there's no additions, it's just additional information for your packet.
Thanks. Make that note. All right, we got a motion to second the approval of the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any citizens to be heard? Anybody in the yard who wants to speak on some item that's not on the agenda? Anybody online?
I know, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Pause for effect. He is 50 now.
Going to stay with us all morning? Next time we get the approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
So much.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion to second the approval of the bills and vouchers, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from June 13th.
Move for approval.
Got a motion to second the approval of the minutes from June 13th, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Then we move into our featured speaker today, Greg, are you coming? Can I take care of that, West Central Initiative update?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just make sure you agree.
But it's great to have Greg in the room, I bet you haven't seen him for a little while, maybe some of you have.
You're Rebecca, I think.
I'm Rebecca.
All right, good.
So I think I'll kick this off, but then I'll turn it over to Greg.
Okay.
Because he's the brains in the room. I'm just the tall one, no kidding. So I'll just start us off right away, I had a nice conversation with Stephen yesterday about the letter that we sent ahead of time, you know, asking for a little increase in funding. And I thought if we had any questions, we don't really want you to make a decision about this today necessarily. We actually think it's great if you have a chance to talk about us when we're not in the room. But it's a little bit of a jump as we try to reach that tipping point that other regional development commissions are doing through the levy process. Remember last year, we brought this little booklet that talked about our work as a regional development organization? And why we are here to ask for your support rather than do it through the levy process? Because we don't have levying authority at this time. So I just wanted to highlight some of the work that we've been doing. And I think, you know, my mantra is always return on investment. We love partnering with you and we hope that we can return your investment in us. And so I will leave these numbers with Steve. But between January 1st of 2022 and June 22nd of 2023, we reinvested 1.834, 104, so about a million eight in your region of Clay County. And a lot of that has been through our grants. We made a lot of deed grants that Greg was really working hard to get out the door over the years of COVID and beyond. And we know that there's going to be more money coming into our region because of the last Minnesota legislative session. We don't have those funds in hand yet, but they're on their way, which means, again, more work for Greg and his staff. And I'll let him talk a little bit about that, but I'll leave these numbers with you, Stephen. In your packet, there's also our annual report that talks about the work that we've been focusing on around climate, community, and kids. And we know that early childhood is a big issue in all of our counties. And so just a little information about what we're doing in Clay County. Our early childhood folks are working with the Jasmine Project here. And also doing a lot of work in Barnesville with staffing. We know that childcare is not only an issue in providing childcare, but finding people to work in the industry. And so staffing is a big issue as well. And then, you know, the partnerships that we have in Clay County are robust. And so maybe when Greg is giving his report on the economic development side of things, he'll highlight that. But that's what I've got for you.
Okay.
And I'll turn it over to Greg.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I'm Greg Wagner. It's been many, many years since I've been in front of the county boards on the circuit where we come and visit all nine county boards. And for those of you that remember, I typically would come here and share great detail of demographics and maybe put you on the edge of sleep with citing statistics and whatnot. Fortunately, I've grown a little bit and we just include that in a flyer or an printout in the packet that you got related to the, what's going on regarding demographics for Clay County. So my work revolves around primarily the economic development and lending side of West Central Initiative's activities. Related to the economic development side, I'd like to share again my appreciation to Commissioner Kravenhoff for your service on the EDD board. I know you had your first meeting here in January and weather prevented us from meeting in person, but it was, it was an effective Zoom meeting, so appreciate your service on that. And I know there's a few of you that have also served in that role too, so appreciate that and I'm glad we can continue a connection. I will talk a little bit about how we are working in Clay County. Some quick examples, Rebecca cited the COVID relief grants. We had two rounds of those in addition to COVID emergency loans that went out. And then in that last 18 months, we did six, actually 66 COVID relief grants from January 22nd, 21 to June 22nd, just what, four days ago? So that totaled $660,000. We did, we've done, our lending programs have provided six loans to Clay County businesses in the last 18 months, and that's been $250,000. We do have a joint fund, a Clay County Loan Fund, that we like to couple with our loans and have the West Central Initiative Loans and the Clay County Loans work together. However, because of the nature of the funding we received, we had some timelines where we had to get those dollars out as fast as we could. So we've been doing projects in Clay County, but we haven't tapped the loan fund on the shoulder for some support because we needed to just, those were federal funds, we had to get them out. So, but you know, now our eyes are on any future projects. We'll be reaching out to Steve and kind of reinvigorating that. And I know, I think we talk about, you know, let's have a meeting and we can kind of go over that. And I will offer that again, it seems like little fires always pop up that prevent that. But now we, that we're kind of in some more normal times, we can definitely get those dollars out and working again that are in the Clay County Loan Fund. And then the other latest big thing that our planning staff has been working on is the Main Street Economic Revitalization Program grant dollars. So the state of Minnesota approved $80 million for Main Street revitalization projects. 40 million went to Greater Minnesota, 40 million went to the metro in response to COVID impacts and the civil disturbances and the damage that had really occurred to our main streets in the last couple of years. So West Central Initiative applied for that and we received 3.5 million. We had requested twice that amount for projects in our region. That created three corridors, there was one corridor in Browns Valley, one corridor in Morris. And then we had interest along Highway 10, so we created a Highway 10 corridor and allocated kind of a prorated basis, $1.8 million to the Highway 10 corridor. The application period just closed for that. We received 44 total applications along the Highway 10 corridor. It closed yesterday at 4 o'clock, so I did not total up the total Clay County impact. I was, I was working to do that, but I kind of ran out of time. But I assure, I want to assure this commission that we have projects in Moorhead, Holly, Dilworth. I believe at least, at least a dozen projects in those communities. So that is a competitive process, it's a 30% grant rate. So if the project is $100,000, they have to come up with $70,000 match. And then if approved, there'll be a $30,000 grant for that construction project. So there is clearly lots of construction going on in Clay County and Moorhead. And also some other additional kind of different work. We've done some aging work in partnership with the Department of Human Services and also Artists on Main Street. There's a Holly project going on right now that took advantage of grant funding for artists on Main Street. So I think I've talked enough, I'd be happy to answer any questions, I know Rebecca would be too. But again, thanks for having us this morning and we're glad for this continued partnership and glad to work in communities that you represent.
Okay. Any questions for Greg?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just out of curiosity, you had mentioned there were six businesses in Clay County that received, was that from the federal dollars or was that the Clay County Loan Fund?
It was, it was a mix. We did not utilize the Clay County Loan Fund because we had to get those federal dollars out. So there was a couple of those, but then there's also been a couple of projects that have just, due to the timing, we've utilized other loan dollars.
Were there, how many applications did you receive on behalf of Clay County businesses for those loan funds? I mean, six received it, but I'm curious how many applications you got?
I believe it's actually just in the last 18 months, it's been those six. We have not denied any loans in Clay County, to my knowledge. So it's, it's, they've been strong projects. So typically how loan requests work, we'll often partner with the bank. So the bank will have funded a portion of the project, but due to their regulations, aren't able to fund the whole project. So we'll provide that gap financing. And then there's been a couple in Moorhead, so the Clay County Loan Fund, we can't use that within the city limits of Moorhead. So we'll look to the Moorhead Loan Fund as well and leverage that similar to the Clay County Loan Fund. Similar to that in Barnesville too. Barnesville's a little different where we can, all three loan funds can collaborate. So if it's a, you know, $96, $99,000 request, we'll do a third, third, and third from West Central Clay County Loan Fund and Barnesville Loan Fund.
So for any, anybody who might be considering it to this point, the federal money, that's gone, that time has elapsed. But the Clay County Loan Fund is still available?
Clay County Loan Fund is still available and WCI has loan funds available too. And then as that federal money revolves and is paid back, that replenishes into a fund as well. So we will utilize that when we have funding available for that too.
And the $1.8 million that went to the Highway 10 corridor, can additional Clay County Loan Fund dollars be used to, as part of that process?
Yes, so for the match portion of the project, they can either have, it has to be outside financing. It can't be state or federal dollars though. So Clay County Loan Fund dollars would be perfect for them if they need, if they're gonna, for their match portion, if they're going to finance that and they come to West Central, we'll say, hey, we got Clay County Loan Fund dollars here that are very good fit for this project, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Another question, just a statement. I see that you were able to help out several of our rural fire departments in Clay County. And we know that funding is tricky for them to acquire sometimes. So it really much appreciated for those folks that represent all of Clay. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. Targeted the smaller communities.
All right, if there's no other further questions, thank you for your presentation, Greg.
Thank you.
Keeping us up to date and what's going on. Okay, next thing, we got the approval of amended lease agreements for the Family Healthcare Suites 106A and B in the Family Service Building, Joe?
Morning, Mr. Chair, Board members. Yeah, so we're, this morning we're talking about asking approval to approve both of these leases. If you guys, if you recall, we entered into a couple short-term leases with the dental clinic. And when child support had moved up to fourth floor, we had entered into a reduced rate with them on what is called 106A in the Family Service Center, that's right next to the dental clinic. And so the agreement was, is once they started construction and the short-term lease was over, that we would have them back up at the 1375 per square foot. So that's what, so the lease is up for renewal. And talking with them, it sounds like they are going to be done around the end of February. So we've been talking about a long-term 10-year lease with them and still kind of working those deals out. And we were planning on bringing them to the board to do an update with you as well. But currently, right now, the space itself, 106A, is completely gutted out and they're on their way and the project seems to be going well. So just here today to, normally this would be a consent, but I thought it'd be a good opportunity to update you. So questions for me on this?
Mr. Chair, pending our legal review, I'll make a motion to approve the amended lease agreements for Suites 106A and 106B.
Second.
Okay. You've got a motion to second, any discussion on that? I thought I had a question, do they pay their own power or electricity and stuff? I thought I saw something in here.
No, they don't, they, they don't, as far as their, everything's rolled into the lease.
Everything's rolled into the lease.
Exactly, yep.
I thought I saw some section that said some of them paying for separate things, okay, very good. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Corey requests the purchase of a loader.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board members, thank you for having us. The landfill is here today to request the purchase of a payloader. Our current loader is on a six-year cycle and we are currently in year seven, so we're behind on replacing it. We use the loader, it's probably the most used piece of equipment we have out there. We're in it for hours every day. It's starting to show some wear and we went out and got three bids. We got one from Cat, we got one from Komatsu, and we got one from Jean Deere. And that was the addition to your packet this morning. It shows a breakdown, the pros and cons of each. So we are here today to request the $339,000 to purchase the Komatsu, which was the low end of the bids and also had the best service agreement. And we feel the best service as far as maintenance, so that would be our request.
Okay.
One note, I did not include the individual bids for each machine. I have them if you want them, it's pretty dry reading, so I didn't want to bore you with it. But we broke it out here on the sheet for you, so.
Mr. Chair, this was, this was also presented to the SWAC Committee last week and they did recommend, they requested approval for the Komatsu. And, and it does tie in, the other machine we have out there is also a Komatsu. And, and so they'd both be able to be maintained by the same onsite service. With that, I would, I would move approval of the purchase of the Komatsu.
Second.
Got a motion to second the approval of the purchase of a loader for the landfill? Any further discussion?
I think it probably should be said also that, given the three bids, that was the lowest.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Brett, did you want to say something or did you want to just let you go without saying something?
He was my muscle today.
I see.
I got all the details, so.
He did a good job.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we move on to the Department of Motor Vehicle Product Review.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I also have Ryan Weber from Klein-McCarthy on the teams. Teams, I'm just going to share a little bit of information before I turn it, turn it over to Ryan. As you, as you certainly know, we're, we've been, this morning we have a discussion and a presentation planned for the commission in regards to the DMV project. This information is being brought forward, that was vetted through the building committee and information brought forward through Klein-McCarthy Architects based on the request that this board has previously made. As you're aware, our DMV is located at the Moritz Center Mall. We have a current lease that operates or runs through November 30th of 2025. But we know that after that date, that area will not be available. On March 7th of this year, the commission approved Klein-McCarthy to conduct a pre-design space needs that included both the county's needs, but also the state testing needs. If you recall, prior to COVID, we were co-located in one building and there are many positives in doing so. While the state driver's license service is contracted in their current lease through 2026, they have provided a letter which is included in the packet confirming their desire to co-locate once our lease, once their lease expires. The commission also asked the committee to look at existing commercial spaces. That meant both the square footage needs and the parking and the ability to have a minimum of two semis to get in and out of that area as a part of this plan. While we're in a current lease in our DMV location, it has been the board's, board's position that the best use of tax dollars is to utilize or purchase or own the property moving forward. And so as we, in the lease that we're in, that lease was a response at the time to COVID. And if you recall, a pretty small waiting room in the, in the old facility. And so I think it's important to note for, for our citizens, again, just a reminder that this lease and the setup for the DMV was funded through CARES dollars, again, which was set up in response to COVID. And no, no dollars were utilized from the levy to, to, for those leases are set up. In exploring the available commercial space to purchase over a number of, not just months, but years, but specifically over the last month, we found it very challenging. We're unable to find a building that, that provided the square footage needs and also the parking spaces that were mentioned. Joe Olson, Lori Johnson, and I did, having said that, did explore some different lease options in, in the city of Moorhead. Just to explore those different, different options. And we didn't, again, didn't find an acceptable property based on the needs discussed above. Again, I think that we have, we've talked, there were some different buildings from a, from a larger square footage size, but from a, from the size that we're going to be talking about today with the access, it was challenging to do that. Through multiple planning meetings, Klein-McCarthy, Klein-McCarthy has provided preliminary design that they're going to be going over shortly in the construction of a new project. As part of this, part of this exploration, the committee also looked at, at potential locations for the facility on all county-owned property. We did look and discussed having, having the ability to purchase additional land. But the feeling from the committee was that based on where the cost of this project was going to come in, we had a suitable option. But just to give you an idea, we did look at four different locations. We looked at the space to the east of our storage unit in the industrial park in South, South Moorhead. Again, that footprint was too small based on the building that we had. We looked to the west of the government center, that we have a parking lot there. Again, from a building space, we probably, we maybe could have made it work, but it was likely too small. We also would have had issues with parking and also access for semis. We looked at the facility at the highway department. The property is owned both by the city of Moorhead, MinDOT, and the county, so we owe our in thirds. And given the timeline that we had on this project, felt that it may be challenging to split that property out in a timely fashion. Like the first option, the committee also were concerned with the high traffic counts in industrial park. Didn't feel that maybe that was their best spot. The fourth option, and the committee's recommendation is to, was to build the new DMV project on the southwest corner of the 20-acre plot that the Resource Recovery Facility and where the new withdrawal management detox facility will be built. Through the development of those two projects, there was a great deal of planning that went into potential uses for that remaining property and in regards to infrastructure, electrical gas lines, water retention. And so feel that, that gave us an opportunity to save funds. And to note, when, when Ryan and I see Scott has joined, when they provide the estimate on that, again, the estimate would be based on placing that facility on this location. Along with no additional cost for land, adding the building, adding another building to the county land gave Joe the opportunity not to spread out his maintenance staff or custodial staff any further. The committee also felt that the location was a, was actually a plus. Has easy access through 34th Avenue from Highway 10, also from I-94. With the underpass now, those coming up Highway 75 and utilizing 15th Avenue South, or 15th Avenue North would also not have to deal with the trains. The location is only about a mile and a half, it's a mile and a half direct, directly east of the old locations. Our citizens are used to coming there. And I think one of the other things that we felt was, that we discussed was, on an average day, we have 150 to 300 transactions at the DMV. And so the committee also felt that the building could be a catalyst, an economic catalyst for the area on 34th Street and also the Highway 10 corridor. And so that's my introduction. With that, I would yield for, for any questions before turning it over to Scott and Ryan.
Yes, Steve, those transactions, you said, would that be prior to the state entering in the numbers?
That is, that's correct, that's what we're doing on a daily basis at the Moritz Center Mall location.
And in reading this letter, it looks like a clear interest, but what level of commitment? I mean, how, we're going to have to do a fair amount of increased expenditure to make this work? How committed is the state?
Well, the state, from our conversations with their supervisor, has, has anticipated, said that they, once they go into a site, they don't leave unless they're asked. And so in full transparency, they're, as we've, we've seen with the state and a lot of other things, they're not bringing any funds to the table. But we would be looking to utilize that, utilize them through a lease, a long-term lease to recoup.
Okay, I certainly think it'd be more convenient for the public, but they're, they're not in any position where they can get out of their current lease.
No, my understanding is, is the only, there was.
The only way they can get out of their current lease is if they move to a state-owned facility. And they could, but there's really no other out for them.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, maybe I can add a little bit to that, to your question. The, the state, obviously they, they can't bring money into the construction of it. But, but even in what they're paying per square foot in their, in their current location, it's a, you know, it's a significant value that, once they do come in, something even similar to that would be very useful. We're kind of looking at, at this very similar to when we built the law enforcement center and we have a long-term lease with the city. The city didn't bring any money into the construction of that facility either. But they did, but they did enter into a long-term lease that, that helped the financial package for paying for it. So, but I, you know, another really important point of this, and you know, and I know Commissioner Mojo's talked about it an awful lot, is, is the licensing piece of this. And a lot of our Clay County people are constantly having to leave Clay County to go get testing for their kids, for their licenses. Now, that is still the responsibility of the state. But if we're co-located and we've, we've designed this thing to allow for additional testing to be done within the site, thinking forward. And the idea in mind that we're going to have to still work moving forward to convince our legislatures that, that the testing is, is needed. It's kind of an embarrassment for Clay County, the largest county in Northwest Minnesota, to have to have their people go out of, out of county to have testing done. You know, Commissioner Mojo's raised that issue a lot and, and we kind of agreed with that and we incorporated. that and we incorporate that and we, and we think that this will allow that opportunity to happen. And we even brought that up with a guy from the Department of Motor Vehicles and he was very interested and understood our position on that. So it's, I think it's a first step in moving forward in that regard as well with the state.
One, one more thing that I would like us to keep in mind, it's a problem that Commissioner Mojo brought to my attention about the Withdrawal Management Detox Center. There's no bus service out there. And as we bring in something that's going to bring in even more need for transportation for the public, particularly a li, you know, if you don't have a license, you can't drive your vehicle out there. And there needs to be a means for our public to get out there. And I think this is something, if we move forward on this, we need to continue to get the public transportation authority advise that there's a need for this and they need to route a bus out there.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, you're correct. We're having ongoing conversations with the city of Morehead. I think not, and just as important for many people, as many people don't even, aren't even getting driver's license, but they need the identification and same thing, they need to be able to have access to that. So we'll continue that conversation.
I'm just going to make a comment, too. As far as the parking spaces that we need, I mean, the one, I think it was the last day of the month, last May, I think you had 300 transactions that day.
It was a, on a Friday.
So the average is 100, but we had 300 the one day. So there's a lot of traffic going in and out of there. So we have to make, accommodate for that, so.
Yeah, I, you know, I think there might be more questions after Scott goes through the, the presentation here, but it, you know, I, just commenting upfront and working with Lori and Chelsea and, and on this whole design of this thing, it's, it's really been, I think we made really strong inroads as we proceeded in the Moritz Center Mall. The wait times have been really reduced, but they're even fine tuning that even more as, as we would go into this facility, which would be also another benefit to all of our... But I think maybe you'll see some of this as he gets into the, into that report.
Okay. Do we want to move on to Scott or are there any other questions or discussions? Okay.
This morning, again, we have Scott and, and Ryan from A, or excuse me, from Klein-McCarthy. They have done, they have done our pre-design work on this project, and so I'll turn it over to, to you gentlemen.
Oh, good morning, commissioners. I'm going to turn it to Ryan. He's done most of the heavy lifting on this with the design and working with him on the layout. So he's got more intricate knowledge of it, so I'm going to let him take it from there.
Boy, I've never, I've never seen Scott actually turn the mic over that fast. That's fairly impressive.
You, you know what? We actually, we actually were betting on that. We thought maybe that Commissioner Gross would make that comment first, but I was fully expecting that.
I'm still on my nice part here.
All right, good morning, commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning. I'm going to pull up a, the presentation and then share my screen for you. Let's see here. Are you able to, able to see it? Looks like it is.
We got it now.
Excellent. So I'll start off with this site plan. This is adjacent to the Withdrawal Management Center that's currently under construction and just shows kind of approximately the size and location of, of the proposed DMV building. Coming off of 15th Street, there's, there would be a large public parking area in front of it with an aisle for semis to park along the side and then exit out of the transfer station area. So that kind of keeps the semis, gives them a large loop to get in and out of the site as they need to. I'll just kind of keep running through the, oh, here was just a, a larger floor plan, or larger site plan, which showed the transfer station as well. Just to kind of give you an up, just an overview of the program and the design that we're, that we've developed, this is very preliminary, but wanted to go through a, a floor plan idea. Essentially, it would be state's testing area is, is in the green where they would rent this 1,200 square foot. So that would have their testing spaces and a small lobby with staff and some storage. They would also share then the areas in the yellow, which is the public bathrooms and vending area, vestibule directly into their space and the support area in the back with the, the break areas for staff and toilets as well. The, the DMV side with, there would be a separate vestibule for that with, you'd walk in and there would be a queuing area for the first two stations. Those would also be able to help, help residents if there weren't anybody at, in the queuing area. But the design of this is a little different than the current layout. Here, we've got separate stations where the, the staff could go to basically any, any station that's available rather than having assigned stations. So it kind of works where, where, depending on the, the amount of people who are, who are there to get their licenses and, and their, their tabs and things like that, they could, maybe, maybe everybody is all in one group. So there's a couple, couple areas for photos. Middle, there's a large waiting area down here. And then the, then the, it's directly off of vending and toilets for, for people there. There's a separate kind of staff area then in the back with offices, storage, mechanical, electrical. And again, once I mentioned before, there's a shared back support area with, with their break room and, and janitorial spaces. On the exterior design, we've kind of incorporated...
Ryan, just, can you jump back to that? Just to point out a couple, couple little things. The area in the blue on the right is the future expansion as the building would need to grow. That's the way the county side would grow. And Ryan did mention the unassigned staff workstations to help the public. By being unassigned and anybody can grab those, that did reduce the number of those and overall shrunk the footprint of the building. So the staff was very accommodating in keeping the square footage as small as what they needed, actually needed versus assigning spaces and the need for several other spaces up front. So that did keep things smaller.
I would like to also point out, now that you've kind of mentioned that, Scott, is that the, the current square footage of this building is, is designed at 9,726. With the inclusion of the state testing area, this is still smaller than the current proposed, than the current rental space that you're in, but it's also designed more efficiently. So it actually serves a larger amount of people than the current space that, that's being rented. All right, I'll go on to the exterior. The exterior proposed design just kind of conceptually is, is sort of a combination of, of the, the elements that you've got at your, at the Clay LEC with the two-tone brick and, and aluminum metal panel. And then also, it also has some of the character of the design of the, the detox center next door. So there's, there's a little bit of play between both facilities and yet it's a unique design in and of itself. So large, large expanses of windows for the public areas and then allowing a lot of daylight into the office areas as well and break areas. So I'll just kind of show a few, few preliminary renderings of what that would look like. Included in the packet were a lot of information from mechanical and electrical and structural. I'm going to skip over all of that and go right to, actually, I believe that's all of that. I'm going to now upload the, the estimates. A second here.
And Commissioner, as well, he's pulling that up, there's information on the estimates in your packet. We did provide a supplemental handout this morning in regards to some additional things that we, we're looking for clarification from Klein-McCarthy on that they weren't able to get by mailing, but were able to provide, provide. So from, from the estimate document, the information will be coming off, coming off the handout that you received today.
So we got a, a third-party estimate from, from PPM for this project. And what they provided was a low and a high construction cost. And then, so the, what's this, what is, this is based off of his, his current kind of construction size and cost per square footage. And then it includes some things like general conditions for construction management, for having a construction manager onboard, which is the typical process for Clay County. There's also a design contingency built into this since this is very, very early on. So there was 12% added for that. The original design schedule was for construction to start, or for the, the project to be bid this, this winter in November and then construction to start in May. So when they originally did this estimate, the, there was some escalation built in in order to start in May. We've been in discussion now to, with the possibility of, of starting construction yet this fall in, in October or November, getting footings in the ground and, and then construction would take about a year from there. So the possibility, what that allows then is, is a, is a lower cost for escalation of savings of about $200,000. However, because of winter conditions being necessary in order to expedite that schedule, it, it sort of offsets the cost. So there's less escalation, but now you're, you're having winter conditions in order to, to get the building constructed sooner, so.
I might, if I can, I might also add, though, that, you know, why, another reason why we should be considering this is, is one of the things that, that we would save on is our lease payments that are in, that are also in the Moritz Center Mall. And what are those numbers on an annual basis, for example? What is it?
Yeah, for, for next year, the annual is 114,000 roughly.
You know, I mean, those are, those are just things that we need to consider and should consider in this process.
Yep, those are, those haven't been reflected in the estimate here, but they certainly are savings by the county. By getting out of the lease early, you're going to save some money there. There's also some, some things with, you know, potential bidders who are currently working on the, the site for the detox. If they're wanting to stay onsite, there's some potential there that they might get more favorable bids from them. So there's some things there that you can't really quantify. You can't say for sure what, what it might be, but it certainly adds to a favorable condition to start early. So. All right, there's included in the packet where some breakdowns. And then the overall soft costs. So these are things that, that are not included in the construction costs, but are, are things that always are incorporated and that have to be accounted for as well in the project. So you've got your architectural fees are included in this portion. There's the initial survey and geotechnical that'll, that are to be determined, but I think, I think we heard back from the survey or at least on a potential cost for that. Joe might be able to speak to that. There's a 5% kind of estimate for loose furnishings and equipment. And then owners' third-party inspections and then contingencies, which are, are sort of the typical things that are included in a construction project. And anything that's not spent from those typically comes back to the owner. So those are also just estimates for this time. This gives you a low estimate of 5,243,681 and a high estimate of 6,357,352.
Ryan, for the commission, could you maybe provide a little explanation of, of the different prices of why they're, why they're so significant?
Built into the estimate is, is there's a range of quality that's, that's, so on the low end is very basic finishes and quality. And then on the high end is, is a, is a more, I wouldn't say the Taj Mahal, for example, but it is a more expensive, nicer finishes and things like that. So typically, we would, we would expect it to fall somewhere in between, but the estimators at this point give a range. It's, it's kind of based off of that range of, of cost per square foot. So I think I can go back to the beginning and it might explain that a little bit in the packet. But it basically is, is a difference of, of, you know, from about $300 a square foot to $375 a square foot construction cost. And then, then it kind of, you know, trickles from there depending on the percentages that are added as to get to those, the totals. So that's, that's essentially where we're at. And I will, I will hand this back to the commissioners to discuss. Is there anything that you want me to leave up on this or, or would you like me to close the presentation?
You could probably close it up.
I think we've got copies over here, too.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And so if the commission doesn't have any questions of Ryan and Scott at this point, I did just want to, did provide another handout that Lori has been working on, just to kind of give you a general idea of the, of the bonding amount for the project. The first document that, that you have or the first page is just an example of Lori breaking it out over a 10, 10-year, 15-year, and, and 20-year at 4% based on an amount of $4 million, $5 million, $6 million if we were to bond for that dollar amount. She also then did reach out to, to Ellers and got more of a complete example, wouldn't be the final example, but just an example for, with more detail based on the, the interest rates at this, at this point and that breakdown. And so if you, if you take a look at that, if the, the example's based off a 15-year, we have the 10, the 15, and the 20 in, in her examples, this is based off the, the 15-year. This would be, again, taking 6.145 million. Again, there was an adjustment in the price from the time that Lori worked on this to where we are this morning, but again, just gives you, gives you an example of, of where that payment would be. Principal and interest on an annual basis, basis would be, start out right around at $446,000 annually and would fluctuate a few thousand dollars throughout the, the life of that bond. So any, any questions on the bonding process?
I have one. Yeah, so how do you figure ahead of time a bond rate or what is that number? How do you come out with that number?
That typically, Eller sends a, a list of recent bond issues with a current rate, so I just use those, those rates. And then I, over the weekend, I requested this from Eller's and it happened to be in that same vicinity, so.
Okay, and the timing of a bond, how, what's the procedure with that? When, when's that set and when's that start?
Typically, once we approve the project and get part, part of the way down, then we, then we start working on the bond issue. It, it takes about three months, maybe?
Yeah, I think there, I think there's, there's a point that once, once we... Yeah, I think there, I think there's, there's a point that once, once we, once the board would make the decision to purchase the bonds, I think, I think within that period, you're, that rate is locked in within days. Once you, isn't that?
Not necessarily. They, what, what happens is, we, we have to give notice, and it's, and then they accept bids, and then the bids come in, and at that point, you're locked in once we accept that bid.
Yeah, on the bid, yeah, right, right.
And is that market, as of now, kind of been somewhat stable?
It, it hasn't gone up too much. We, we received lower wa, rates in our previous projects, but it's not as high as what your typical home mortgage would be.
Yeah, okay, just curious.
And those projects were also substantially higher, so I, it does help that this is a, a lower dollar amount.
And I, I, you know, and again, I, you know, I'm listening to the Federal Reserve yesterday. I know they're, you know, they're anticipating having to do federal interest rate, two more federal interest rates hikes over the next year. And I don't, you know, I don't know to what extent those higher rates impact bond rates for, for government projects, that I, I don't know, but.
I would anticipate they would affect them a little bit, probably not as much as.
Would go up, yeah.
Any other comments? Questions, okay.
And I, I do, I do want to comment a little bit on the site issue. Our building committee with Commissioner Gross and I serve on, you know, they did look at an awful lot of things. You know, there was discussion about the building, the big building, that's what? 50,000 square feet in Southmore, that's way too big for us. We don't want to get into the landlord business by having to deal with that. There was a building that recently came up on East Hen. We looked at that, and, and by the time we're looking into that, there's already two private offers on that. And I, I don't know that we want to get into competition with private people wanting to do business in, in Morehead and Clay County and potentially bring more jobs. You know, so, so there was a, an awful lot, and I know that Lori and Steve and, and Joe did a, a lot of work in that regard, trying to come up with this right, right choice. And I, and in terms of the recommended site selection, it's, it's, it's easy accessible for all residents of Clay County. And that, and that's, that's really important, too. Some might say, well, why don't we put it in Southmore, because that's where the growth is? Well, we're, this is a county facility, and it's, it's, it's actually, this recommended site works very well.
Yeah, back to the site also, if I may, just curious, I'm losing a little perspective with what we have out there. So the 20 acres, if you, what, what is left of the 20?
Yeah, so, so this current, this current design would, would put, put this building as close to 15th Avenue as possible, and, and so would face 15th Avenue, and leaving room for the required parking that we would need. Back behind that to the north, there still is, still some significant land available back there for, you know, I think it, that would ultimately end up probably being, if there was ever storage needs or something like that, I think it would be an, an ideal situation for the county there. But there still would be room back there for.
Are we to the west boundary, then?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that's kind of what I was wondering. And then on that site mat, mat, is there an easement or something? What is that kitty corner toward the top on the open space? Or is that no, nothing? There, yeah, I was just curious what that was.
If I, and maybe Ryan or Scott remember, but I think it's utilities, if I recall.
Yeah, and that's why I was kind of wondering about that, but, okay, leave the room.
It looks like a water line easement, yep.
Okay, and then the retention pond, that's that, that makes, that's, excuse me, that, that's a of size for the acreage that's there, so that doesn't change?
So, so when we originally did the resource recovery center on that property, when we went through, the, the pond was increased in size at that point in time, and it was increased in size to basically handle the capacity of the full 20-acre, full 20 acres being developed. You know, I, I know, and, I know on the B3 issue, there was, there became some issues regarding the, the pond, but we've, and then, you know, again, we, we looked for a variance on that. We don't have to deal with that. There's no B3 issues on this project that we have to deal with, so, yeah, it's. And, and again, I, so if you look at, if you look at that, too, the, the whole idea, in terms of the traffic and the parking, it's, it's designed very similar to what we have right out in front of the law enforcement center in the courthouse. It's a, it's a complete drive-through from one end to the other, so you can go drive through the detox parking lot. Now, the one issue that we, you know, just to be upfront here, the, the west entrance right there, or the west, the westernmost approach there, we're not sure exactly what sort of restrictions might be on that. The city has indicated that it might be, might have to be only a right-out only on that one. So we'll, but, you know, and again, if you look on there, you can see that the road narrows going to that, to the very west of that lot. So that part, you know, there's a little uncertainty there in terms of, you know, on, on what that might look like. I don't know if Steve, unless you've heard any more from the city.
Dr. Zimmerman, we're working with Dr. Zimmerman on, on that. City Morehead has been willing to, to, without a study, willing to, to work with us, at least talk through that. And, and I think that goes to the important comments that Commissioner Campbell made earlier. With that through, if there is a restriction that the City Morehead puts in to only being able to go a right turn out of the DMV, they would just have to go through the parking lot into the DMV lot and exit that way, would have access either direction.
And one of the, you know, we, we, a little bit, just a little bit on the, on the financing, and two, there's, you know, on all of these other projects, we, every project that we've built in the last number of years, there's been an alternative source other than levy dollars to cover those from the correctional facility and law enforcement center. That was done by the, the people's strong support through a sales tax. That's still going very well. In terms of the resource recovery facility, that was handled, a significant portion of that was through state grants. And also then, that was, that's part of the whole solid waste to, fees that are incorporated that we currently pay was able to absorb the bond payment on that. The, and then, of course, there was ARPA dollars involved with, with that, with that project. And there is ARPA dollars that are involved along with state dollars for the detox facility. So, so those really had zero impact on the levy. This would be the first project that could potentially have an impact on the levy of all of the projects that we've built. There still is some outside opportunities for us to see some ARPA dollars being replenished that could go towards this, too, but that, that's subject to another federal grant we're waiting to hear on, so.
And just to kind of put that in context, Commissioner Campbell's comments said, this commission is, from a strategic plan, has put about over $108 million of, of new construction since 2015. It hasn't fallen on the levy, so.
If I may, in your discussions, I mean, so I'm not being taken wrong. I mean, it, this really makes a lot of sense to me for what we're doing right now. In your conversations, as of its, where it fits on the land, I mean, did you, what about, how do you see any potential growth that may come out of the withdrawal management building into other mental health-type things that we, we'd had brief conversations about?
Yeah.
How would that, you know, are we himming ourselves in or?
Yes, no, so that's a, it's a really good question, but it, but one of the things that you'll look at, too, on, on the, I'm going to use just the term detox because it's simple to say and for, for purpose of this, but we've already incorporated into that plan on that particular site for expansion to move just straight back to the north and, and probably on the eastern side of that, that area.
If you, if you elect Commissioner Kravonov and commissioners, they're moving the cursor over that area.
Yeah, so, so, so we've already got a plan in place for, you know, I know we've talked about additional mental health wing, you know, in, in the future. And we, we already have reserved space for that, right, Steve, that?
That's correct, yeah. And, and as a reminder to the board, the footprint that you see for the existing withdrawal manages is just, just over 10,000 square feet. And so we have a pretty significant size available for whatever that need, whether it's mental health or expansion of detox.
And going back, just going back to the DMV facility, one of the, one of the things to, you know, just to visualize, the, the current leased area within the Morehead Center Mall right now is 8,800 square feet. You heard Ryan and, and Scott mention that this whole facility, the whole facility is about 9,700 square feet, 1,200 being for the, the state. So, so we're actually designing the DMV needs, our DMV needs, at less space than is currently in the Morehead Center Mall, with the idea that it's even going to be more efficient. It's probably about 300 square feet, less than what the current one is. But if you, you know, we, we didn't have any choice when we got the Morehead Center Mall. We had to have the, we had to take the full 8,800. And, and if you go in there, you see there's a, if you've even been in the back area, which the public doesn't see, there's a lot of wasted space back there. So we've really incorporated ways to, to better utilize all of those spaces so they're all, that's, that's not wasted square footage.
And I think Commissioner Campbell noted at the beginning of the presentation, one of the things in the existing, in our, in our old setup, the, the cash, every, every staff member has a cash drawer that, in the old system was, had to stay with that, with that cubicle area. We'll now have the capacity to move that. And so, so one of the concerns, and I know some of the frustrations that our, our citizens have expressed, is they come in, they look at the window, and because of our brakes, brake situation, there are windows that are, that are empty. And so not only do we have the capacity through the expansion of that blue area in your document to go another two areas out, we would have, in addition to our needs, we'll have the, the ability to, I won't say overstaff, but hire additional people that would then be able to supplant the person going on break. And so it's not just the two spots that we have right now that we could expand to, but those additional cubicles could be utilized by more than one person, which that isn't happening right now.
Well, it seems like you've given a lot of time and thought to future growth, which is, I think, is very important. One last question, if I may. On the building, and maybe this is for people online, I'm just curious for that potential growth area on the DMV building on the, on the east side, that blue area. When that's for future growth, what, what does that entail now? Is that about the way you frame it for doorways, or I mean, or is it just a site-specific spot?
It's a, it's a, it's a site-specific spot. There, you know, I mean, there, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, the, the numbers that we have to, have today doesn't enclose that or frame it in or anything, but the design will allow it to be added.
Yeah, and not, I didn't mean that part framed in, I meant that exterior wall. Is there something different done with that?
Yeah, and that, we'd have to ask Ryan to.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, we, we would certainly, it's sort of intended that it could be taken off, and it wouldn't, wouldn't affect the structure. Some, some of it with the openings here, some of the wall could be left, but ideally, I think we would, it would just expand off of this corner. This is sort of the taller volume space, so you would, you would be able to take that wall down. It wouldn't be load-bearing, and you could expand to that direction.
Yeah, I think with the, you could add that on and then pull those windows out to expand the queuing area, and then shift that over to the new addition, and then add on to the, change over some of that to waiting area. And then it would add two more workstations, help desks out there. So I think the idea would be, go ahead and expand that on there, and then get it ready, and then pull those windows out. You see on the staff side, they can flow between the two, and then on the public side, they can move through that window opening that comes out. So I think that idea would keep you from a lot of disruption during construction and changeover.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, first of all, thanks for the work of the committee for really looking at so many projects, not only within the city of Morehead, but I know you worked to look in other communities as well to see if there's any site that, that really seemed to make the most difference. When I get calls from citizens in regards to county services, the DMV is in the top third of all of the calls that I've received. It certainly is a department that has a lot of interface with the public. And this board has been committed to responding to those concerns over the, the past five, six years particularly. I know that when there was, when the state diverted from our, our current site, that was a heartache for a lot of residents, and making sure that we combine those two services again seemed to make the most long-term sense. When we moved to the mall, it really was in response to the concerns and space needs that not only the public was having, but our employees as well. And, and really has been a great site, but I think we've learned that it has not been perfect. And our hope is that in relocating this, it, it really will be the last really move. We didn't want to have another short-term option. It needed to be a long-term option. And I know the public has had comments about where this should be and how accessible it can be. And I want to circle back to access. It is not responsible government to send a single mom to Brainerd so her kid can test for her license, for their license. It's just, it's unacceptable. It was a nightmare for me to have to do that three times to another community, and I have a flexible schedule to do that, and the finances to pay for the gas to do that. It's not okay to expect people to do that. And I think it, it's not only young families, but it's elderly families as well that have that. And so I'm hopeful that by allowing the adequate space at this site, we can encourage the state to offer additional opportunities for people to stay within our community to take those tests. I, I did have, have some concerns early on about what that location would mean. I, I do think that making sure that we're clear to the map bus coordinating board that this is a site that needs to have bus service because of the multitude of services that will happen on this particular parcel of land, not only the DMV, but our withdrawal management and potentially a mental health wing and the transfer station as well. It has to be serviced by a bus system. And I think by taking a large step forward today with the recommendations, I'm hopeful that that will get the ball moving on those, on those questions. And I, I also want to talk to the financial piece of this. You know, this, this is a large investment in space. I appreciate the fact that we're not competing with private business. Their space in Morehead is tricky right now for businesses to relocate. And so I think it's responsible to take a step forward in what this, this build would be. You know, I, I think that we've been calculated in, in how we expand services and how it hits the levy. And you're right, we, this board has been really, really conscious of that. So I, I think financially, this is a wise decision to invest in this. Lori, you've certainly piecedmilled it together so that, that we're conscious about that. And because this is a Um, and, uh, because this is a service that so many citizens all over Clay County, but if the state comes, the region will, will utilize, uh, seems to be a wise use of our funds. So, um, in a long way of saying it, I appreciate your work and support, uh, what we're doing here and what we're hoping to accomplish.
Mr. Chair, um, I, I think, you know, to, to move this thing forward, I, you know, as long as you, you've all had your opportunities to, to have questions for those of us on the committee or for, uh, architects, or for our administrator and our finance director on this, I, you know, I, I think the time is of the essence to, to move forward, and based on the order of sequences here of actions taken, I would move that we move forward with the DMV, um, based on the pre-design estimate.
One second.
Can a motion is second? Do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, in regards to the discussion on that, and I know we've, we had this, um, I think Scott, uh, talked about it just briefly here in terms of timing. I still, I still think that we, uh, need to act in the best interest of financially in terms of the appropriate time to start this facility. I'm not so sure that waiting till next spring is the most financial benefit for us to do. So I, you know, I, I think within this idea to, to move forward, we, we should keep in mind the possibilities of having this thing ready where, for example, the underground could be, and the portion that could be done this fall.
I fully agree with that, too, you know, it's just, we know we need it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so let's go do it.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I, I think that's kind of a direction that, that we, obviously, you know, you, you'll have to come back to us if you, if you feel that it's just not doable, but I, we need to strongly try to do that from a dollar-saving standpoint. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Campbell is correct. If our team is selected, um, we've got commitments from all of our engineers to push this through quicker so that we can do an early, uh, civil and structural package and then follow up with the rest of the building. So, um, we're ready to push forward and get it started this fall.
Thank you, Scott, for getting all that work done. Okay.
I, I might agree, too. I think based on the timeline for where our current site is and what the needs are there to avoid any interruption, the sooner we can, um, really get the ball moving on this, the better.
All right, I'll call for the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Post, I guess, no one. All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like then, uh, as the next, uh, sequence on this is to establish and select the building site being the location on, on, uh, the county-owned property, uh, just adjacent to 34th Street and 15th Avenue North in Morehead.
Second.
Okay, a motion is second to select this, uh, building site. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like then, now, now that this, uh, like typically, like we've done in all of our projects, there was a building committee process, and then it would move on to the finance committee as it moves forward. So I would move that this project, that be moved from the building committee to the finance committee for, um, continuation of the project.
Second.
Okay, a motion is second to move on to have to build the committee, move it on to the finance committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
And if I could, uh, again, thank Commissioner Gross for his work on the building committee. Uh, he said he, he's, he's looking forward to the next building committee project after this, but, no, but, uh, seriously.
Frank.
Seriously.
You are serious, are you?
Thank you for, thank you for your work.
It's gotta be something, it's gotta be something we can build. Okay. All right, you got, we moving on to another thing, or?
Yeah, we have a couple, couple more things to, to move forward with the project. Uh, the, the next item, Mr. Chair, uh, would be to request authorization to negotiate a design contract with Klein-McCarthy. Uh, as, uh, they've just recently mentioned, they were part of the pre-design. Uh, they've done a great deal of, of work into this, uh, project and from a, from a financial and a, uh, quality standpoint, uh, would make the request to, to move board into negotiations, uh, with Klein-McCarthy, which I would bring that contract, uh, to this board at a later date.
Mr. Chair, again, I, you know, going back to past experience with Klein-McCarthy from our correctional facility, law enforcement facility, and all the other facilities we've done in the time period that our administrators talked about, it's been exceptional work. Uh, and, uh, with that, I would, I would move that we enter into negotiations with Klein-McCarthy.
Second.
Okay, a motion is second to continue negotiations with Klein-McCarthy. Does Klein-McCarthy agree with that?
We're ready to get started, uh, as soon as you vote yes.
Okay. Uh, we got a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, very good. All right, you're on to vote. Start rolling.
We, we will get on it, uh, right now.
Okay. Thank you, Scott and Ryan.
You bet.
Um, Mr. Chair, our, our next item, uh, would be a, a request to have approval to submit RFQ, uh, for qualifications for a construction manager or a construction manager at risk for this project. Uh, with all of our projects, we've utilized, uh, one of these, uh, forms of construction management, uh, and so we would be requesting approval to start that process.
Mr. Chair, can you, uh, the timeline to do this, uh, can, is, how long has it taken us in the past to go through this process? I, you know, I, again, to talk about what we want to do here, this, this needs to be expedited.
Uh, so, so, Mr. Chair, we, it would be a matter of pulling together the RFQ, uh, which I think would be able to be done fairly quickly, given, um, given our recent projects. Uh, we then do have a timeline of, of, I believe, uh, two different 10 days that, that the project has to be advertised, uh, for, so we, uh, we could have that, uh, hopefully here, uh, by the end of July.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that, I take it?
Uh, we would.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the, uh, requests, uh, for RFQs for construction management or construction management at risk, but to the, uh, DMV construction project.
Okay, we got a motion, any second?
I do have a question.
I'll, I'll, I'll second it.
I'll give it a second before we do.
I'll second it, then you can...
Okay, you got a second?
Thank you.
Question?
So, just, uh, again, uh, just being newer now, this, first time I'm going through this, but I was part of the discussions, uh, before I was elected, or not part of the discussion, but I was, you know, I, I listened in. So is there a reason you do both construction management and also at-risk at this time when, uh, it seemed like that was so heavily debated last time? I, I, or why do you throw it out both ways? I, I guess, I would, just kind of curious.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kravonoff, that's why we, why we put it out there the way we did was exactly for, for, I guess, your question. That's up to this board on, on how you'd like to best move forward.
And maybe I'd lean on someone here to, maybe Commissioner Campbell. I mean, you know, we had, that debate kind of went, went on a couple of meetings, and it...
Well, so, so we've used, uh, we've used the construction manager at-risk in most incidents, in most of our projects. The latest one, the, um, detox facility now is the one that's, is, is just a construction manager, not, not the at-risk. You know, there, there, we don't really have any thing to suggest either way, one is better than the other. It's, that project is just getting off the ground. But I, you know, I, I, you know, I, I certainly understand your question and say, well, what, you know...
Well, and all I'm thinking is essence of time.
Yeah.
You know, that's part of it.
Right.
The other part is, uh, are there certain contractors that prefer one versus the other?
I, I think the reason we are including both is the opportunity for, uh, firms to come forward with proposals, and it's our decision to see which one makes the most financial sense. I think, um, in the, the other projects that we've done financially, uh, for the best overall cost for the county was to do the CMAR. Um, the proposal for the last one was to have a, uh, CM. It's, it's then those companies' opportunities to sell it to this board once we get farther down the road. I think we, we don't want to exclude part of that because we don't know what we don't know, and those firms can prove it to us otherwise.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think the way it's being presented here, I, I don't think that interferes with our timeline at all. It, it basically becomes the presentation of those submitting the RFQs on what they would prefer and, and why they think they would prefer it as, you know, and then again, like Commissioner Mojo, then it, it becomes this board who decides that...
What to do otherwise is to limit our options and limit who can submit, and as in the last case, they bring the information forward, and if it supports and, and gives us a better, uh, use of, of tax dollars, then show us, and if that's the case, in either model, we'll make that selection, but there's no need to limit our selection at the front end of the process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on that, or we?
We do, yes.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right, one final one, Mr. Chair. Uh, as we've done in past projects, uh, one of the requests that we have before you today as we move this to the finance committee would be authorizing, uh, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo, when they are in an agreement, uh, of a potential change order that would impact, uh, impact, uh, either the, the timeline of, of the project or the potential cost of the project, that they have the authority to, to spend up to $50,000 prior to receiving the full board's, uh, full, full commission's, uh, authorization.
I would move to approve that, uh, we give them the authority if they so want it, um, for the DMV construction, uh, giving them authority of $50,000 prior, um, coming to the board when both of those two commissioners agree. Second.
Okay.
I don't think it's a matter of wanting it, I think it's a matter of, of, of just making sure that we're, uh, doing things that, that don't create additional expense by having to wait from the time period when we have board meetings.
Okay, we got a motion for authorizing up to $50,000 prior to coming to the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's all you got, huh?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan and Scott.
Thank you, Scott and Ryan.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Without going, committee reports. Jenny, you want to start us out?
Yes, thank you. I, last week, um, attended the Community Action Lakes and Prairies Board Meeting. I was having some connectivity issues online, so I'll defer to maybe Commissioner Kravonoff, who was in person on that one, but, um, certainly they're in the process of, um, there was a lot of legislative funds that were released that will affect a lot of their clients in programming, and so they're doing the best they can to address how those, um, additional funds will, um, be utilized, and they're doing a great job by doing so. Yesterday, I attended the Lakes and Prairies, or no, Lakeland Mental Health Board Meeting in Fergus Falls. We had an update, uh, the Clay County Collaborative gave an update. Um, as noted, they'd hired a coordinator, uh, for the first time in a long time, their fund balance is ending the year at $330,000. There were some years where they were, um, really low there, which is, uh, good because, um, I think I saw a proposal, and they're hoping to provide additional services in different areas, so that's nice to have that. Otter Tail did not meet, however, they, uh, did also have an opening for their coordinator position, and it seems like they've offered a full-time position as well. Uh, we had reports for the center, uh, even with, um, summer and time off from staff, the access indicators look great. They've done a, a really good job of reducing the wait time for the number of days between, uh, referrals and their initial psychiatric and therapy appointments, less than, uh, four days for most of the sites, so that's, uh, a really good thing to see. They, um, in the, the performance indicators have a few open positions in the staffing pattern, but, um, it, it continues to look, uh, really good there. Um, the number of new and reopened in 2023 is, is at 237, um, right now, so that is also, seems to align with what we've done in years prior. And their, um, their profit loss percent is really healthy and high right now, but that's at about 13.10%, but that's because Medicaid, Medica has a substantial lag in the amount of time in which they're processing claims. So, um, while we're still, um, anticipating to see, uh, positive margins there, it's not going to be quite as high as that in coming days. Talked about, um, a contract with Canvas Health, where they're in the process of, um, hiring for a full-time position for a suicide prevention advocate. That's, that's a huge, um, asset that they're hoping to, um, fill, and then did talk a, a lot about, um, they are in the process of contracting with Sanford Health to embed a full-time practitioner in the ambulance services. That, um, that position would office with the Sanford Ambulance. When it comes in as a Clay County, uh, call, they will send that, uh, with the ambulance. So I know that Commissioner Ebinger and, um, Commissioner Kaylee before and I were part of discussions with the Mobile Mel, Mental Health Crisis Team. That seemed to be an issue that some of our, um, law enforcement departments were dealing with, and so hopeful that that can help address a, a portion of that pie, um, there, but grateful that Lakeland will be, uh, working towards addressing that. They, uh, noted that Rice County officials had visited our Reed River Project at the Clay County Jail. They're hoping to, um, emulate part of the programming there, and they were really, uh, pleased with what they saw, so that was exciting to hear. And talked about, um, the budget request for 2024, uh, will remain steady. Um, they've not asked for an increase from Clay County since 2020 in that, and do feel that they're able to continue the high level of, of services that we've come to expect, um, based on the, the prices. So I believe that, uh, covers everything that we discussed at that meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. On, uh, June 20th, we had the, um, ARPA committee meeting, um...
Oh, I forgot to...
Yeah.
I was part of that.
I'll report on it.
Nice.
Uh, there were two issues that, that, um, came before us, uh, as requests. The first one was, um, CAP LP and the rural routes. Uh, we had, uh, in the past, we had, uh, supplied them some funding through ARPA, uh, with the, um, with the really low amount of dollars we have remaining, uh, and the data that we received, it, um, it appeared that the cost per ride was really, really expensive under this process. Um, you know, I think the, there was, you know, they were talking about 460 rides or something like that, and the price that we had funded was 54,000 and almost like $120 per ride. Um, you know, and so, I, you know, the ARPA committee certainly feels and understands the significance and importance of that project, but, but for the, for that kind of money and the very limited amount of ARPA dollars we had available, we just, we could not, we did not make a recommendation, uh, moving forward with that, with that request. Uh, not to say that we still need to work with our social services department and so on and so forth, uh, finding an alternate, alternative methods for those needs. Uh, we also then received a request again from the, uh, chamber regarding the Ignite funding, and as you recall, last year, there was a request made on that, and, uh, through ARPA, and we did not fund it through ARPA last year, but we did, we did elect to do a portion of what they had requested... a portion of what they had requested through our regular levy. So basically, the ARPA Committee has also taken that same position this year, that with our limited funding that we have remaining, that we did not feel that it was the right time to be funding with ARPA dollars. Those were the two things that we had on that committee. I think there still will be a discussion about that through the regular budgeting process as we move forward. On the 21st, we did have a, we were supposed to have a, well, I guess I should start with. The 22nd, we had the Solid Waste Advisory Committee Meeting. We had a discussion about the equipment that we approved today. There was some discussion about the recycling facility in Saban that they apparently no longer want to have that there. And, you know, part of the score dollars goes towards that. And I think the message was is that, you know, we support that, that facility staying open. It certainly, there's a lot more, there's a lot of people in that entire part of that region of the county that use that facility. But, so we'll, we'll see where that goes. We were encouraging them to consider keeping that open. We received a report from Brett on landfill activities. Everything else seems to be going well there. Then we also, on the 22nd, Commissioner Gross and I met with Steve Larson and Rocky Schneider from AE2S. We had a meeting that was, that we had yesterday with the West Central Rural Watershed, or Water District, not Watershed, but Water District Proposal that's out there. And we wanted to have some discussions about where they're at with what we hired them to do. And so we had those discussions. And then on the, we also then had a diversion Board of Authority Meeting. And I received project updates from the Corps. And I think the biggest news out of that, they think they had the biggest concrete pour in the history of our area here that just happened, 240-some, equivalent to 200 trucks, semi, trucks of concrete that were poured. But that project continues to move forward. We'd got a report of the Executive Director's Report. And then also, there was, Chair Mayor Mahoney talked a little bit about the performance evaluation that was done on Joel Paulson, the Executive Director, and all of the, all of the individual deals that had come in and given him high, high remarks on his efforts as the Director. Yesterday morning, then, we were in Halsted again for the West Central Regional Watershed District Work Group. We continued to talk about, you know, I think the biggest issue that we talked about is, is what is the district size going to look like? And what, where we want, you know, what Clay County we want to look like? And, and, you know, part of the, part of the process is you gotta, you gotta, when you go to establish this to the courts, you have to demonstrate need, you know. And, and, you know, so when we said, well, should we just have the whole county, which would include Morehead and Dilworth? Well, Morehead and Dilworth, there really is no need for water. They have it, so. But when you look at the other area, there was a map presented about, you know, arsenic that's scattered throughout Clay County, not just in the eight townships that were previously proposed for Clay County to be in this district. But it goes, it also has some of that same issues throughout Clay County. So, you know, we continue to work with AE2S, you know, on, on, and I think we're going to probably be ready in the end of July or sometime in August, they'll come to this board. And I think this board then will have to make a decision on what we would like to see that the district boundaries to be in Clay County and have that discussion. And then, and then Frank and I can bring that back to the West Central Group. Because they ultimately, they want to have a full district area to proceed then with what they're working on through this, through the court system to get that district created. A lot of discussion on that, it went back and forth and back and forth, and so. Frank might want to add some more to that report, but that concludes my report.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I really quick, Commissioner Ebinger, sorry. I apparently forgot to report on the fact that I was at the ARPA Committee as well. But the next day, there was a violations and code enforcement meeting that we had attended in regards to talking about some of the enforcement violations within the county code that are existing, talk about how we address violations and go through the, the process of investigating it and how we enforce it. And then talked about some of the development violations that are currently going on. You know, sometimes it feels as though our departments don't really have much teeth in regards to how we can address a violation. And after the fact, permits come forward a lot. So it was a good opportunity to talk with the Planning Department and Sheriff's Department and staff on how we can best help our staff address these as well. One part that I was not aware of is that Erica in the Planning Department has got her operator's drone license to use as a tool for that department to fly over some of the boundaries and borders of the permits that we issue to make sure that groups are adhering to what they said they would. So that was really, really neat. And then I also attended the SWAC Committee Meeting on Thursday morning, as Commissioner Campbell stated. I did have a head cold last week, so please give me a little grace on forgetting where I was.
Got to stand, though, okay. David, guess you got the floor now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Wednesday, the 21st, I virtually attended the Diversion Authority Finance Committee Meeting. It lasted 15 minutes. We approved two contracts and two MOUs and sent them on for the consent agenda on the following day, which was the Board of Authority, Diversion Authority, Board of Authority Meeting. But all of those were approved, were approved in the consent agenda. Commissioner Campbell attended that meeting with me. He's reported on the activities there well. The following day, on Friday, the 23rd, Clay County was a location for the Dancing Sky Area Agency on Aging Meeting. They have a roadshow every three months, and we get, get them in our community this month. And I want to thank the Sheriff and the Chief for letting us use the Law Enforcement Center. It's a great training facility over there, and we used it for our virtual meeting. And I've got to admit, we were in a lot of trouble if they expected me to be able to set that thing up for a Zoom meeting. Thank you to our IT people for coming over, helping us get set up, because it would have been ugly had they not been available. Had an interesting meeting. Had a resolution we needed to consider. There has been a couple of tribal groups, or one, at least one, in the state that have determined they don't want to be connected with, they want coverage, but they, they don't want to be with the current structure that is set up by the state determining the service areas for the various regional agencies on aging. This has caused kind of a tip over to where they're going to reconsider the configuration of it now. The Dancing Sky is a very large area geographically, but the population in many of the counties that are included in the Dancing Sky area of aging, or area on aging, there, some of the counties are very sparsely populated. We had to have a discussion on where we wanted to go in our submission to the state. And after fairly good discussion and a lot of information from the staff, it's determined that we're going to send a letter in explaining to the group that's working on planning in service area structure that we want to either keep what we've got, the current structure, or that we're capable of including up to four areas, four counties and/or tribal areas. So that's all going to be a work in progress over the next probably six to eight months. But we needed, wanted to get our voice in there as early as possible. Also, we're going to continue with a senior coordinator model as, as our organizational structure. We then had a presentation from Dementia Friends. It was an info session. It was really a good training. And ours was an abbreviated version, but for any group that works with the public and wants more information on how to identify and how to communicate and how to work with people suffering from dementia. This was a great overview and had great tips. And I'd strongly recommend that you contact the, the local area on aging or go to the website for Dementia Friends and set up a training. It's free and is very useful, I think, for the public. You know, it may be something, Mr. Larson, that we want to consider for any of our, the social services or any of the, of our employees who deal with dementia patients. I know we have social workers, they're well-trained in that. But for people who we've got that may come in contact, it's a, it's a valuable thing. And I'm going to suggest it to the Sheriff and the Chief as possible, training material for them. And that completes my report.
Paul?
Thank you. On last Tuesday, on the 20th, I attended our monthly Adult Mental Health, LAC. Main things brought up there were, we had a very good report from the, one of the people from CCI, which is Creative Care for Reaching Independence. They gave us some deeper detail about their work and the pillars of their program, which are certainly 24-hour services, other options that work for care needed on less than 24 hours, also independent living, which is a program that helps people through technology, giving people awarenesses of when they need their meds and other type things. And then also, area where they work with housing of individuals. It was very, very complete and informative. The LAC will, as they were breakfast on the farm, they will have a booth at the Clay County Fair coming up on July 14th. And then also, just build into what Commissioner Mojo had talked about with Lakeland, we also talked quite a bit about the crisis response. And people from Lakeland were there, as well as Captain Swenson, Derek. And maybe we should talk a little more about that. But it, it comes up every month, and it's very important. Then the next day, on Wednesday, I had my monthly board meeting for the Historical Cultural Society. And we had two new board members join us for the first time. We have committee appointments made. I was put on the Finance Committee. And then also, that goes back to the Clay County Fair. We're set up to work there for three days. And so, you know, I've, I've been to the Clay County Fair quite often, but I don't know that I've been there for three days, so. It'll be a good time, I'll see, I'm sure I'll see Commissioner Mojo out there quite a bit. The next night, we did have our monthly meeting for CAP LP. Commissioner Mojo just mentioned a little bit about that. Again, real quick, that we had a, as our spotlight, a full report by Kristen Phillips that talked about the Head Start Program. You know, this involves about 180 kids all underneath the poverty line. These major monies for this all come through the federal government through community partner action and, I'm sorry, community action partnership. And, and they have, through their reporting, they actually got another $64,000 from the federal government so that now they'll have three more kids available. There is quite a list of people waiting to get, to be part of that program. And, but there are other alternatives for those that aren't able to get in. Let's see, was there a last part? I think that was, yeah. And they talked about upcoming grants. And it was, they did a renewal for a $3 million grant through the federal government, as well as other ones still in line to come through the state. Yesterday, Monday, on 26th, I had my Castle Lake Food Commission Steering Committee Meeting, getting our items in place for the Food Commission Meeting that'll be on September 13th. One of the things that, I guess my wife's involved, so I'm keenly aware of it. She works through the, one of the community gardens, very active with that, growing together. But I, I bring that up in the way just to talk about how there's been an increase in, in food supply through community gardens that has really increased, in particular in Morehead, getting it up and going, it's good to see. Also, firewood continues to grow in that area, too. And, and we're trying to find, find out more, what is it throughout casting Clay Counties themselves? You know, in other communities, so that we can make sure we have, for lack of better words, a directory for opportunities for people to be part of those things to make them grow. This growth is really being reflected in our markets, farmers' markets that are growing around town. And just two I'll mention is the one in Morehead and certainly the Red River Market that's on, which will start in July. The Morehead Market started at the beginning of June. That has increased significantly from what it has, many more vendors. I don't have numbers, but it, it did grow quite a bit. And that's on Thursdays. And then the one Saturday morning over at the Red River Market, they've grown to 92 vendors. It's incredible. So that's going to keep going down the street, and that'll start opening up in July, and that will go through October. And then last night, I guess I, I found this important, having been on the Buffalo Red Watershed District for a while. Anyway, we had a hearing for the Stony Creek, so Project Haiti, which would be where Stony Creek and Hay Creek, both which start up by Lake Park and areas to the east to come down and through Clay County, and then they merge collectively just south of the Downer exit, about two miles. And it goes underneath the interstate. It's called ditch 31. And anyway, you know, there's been plans for the, and what to do with this area for impoundments and as far as, you know, the flooding that occurs from it annually and the amount of sedimentation that is filling this. This original drainage ditch was put in the early 1900s, like between 1900 and 1907. That's how old it is. And at that time, it was this mirandine creek. Well, they channel it, and then it, it fills in. Well, now, if I can go back, maybe the previous administrator, Bruce Albright, kind of had a big plan, ultimate plan he could do, and that had some retention to it. That was like $14 million in today's cost. There was more discussion when I was on the board as alternatives to that, that potentially, yes, that could be one alternative. Another one could be something reduced down, $7 million. But these were based off land values. but these were based off land values of land before we had big hikes on ag property. So their current plan is maybe more a staged or a funding approach, so what they really have worked toward is, we have a water management area that's drawn, it's 131 square miles, and the current plan is a $3 million project that is 5 and 4 miles long, and it's at the heart of the area that, you know, they don't have 10% or 10-year flood protection at all anymore. This thing breaks out year after year after year. So it's really coordinating to one area, get, let's get the meanders back in, let's get the sediment cleaned out, so we have an area of water that doesn't create any more flooding downstream, however slows that water and gives a little more area to give it time, so it doesn't have its breakouts. So that's specifically what the hearing was about. They, of this $3,000 estimated cost, they have $2 million in grants right now already set up to help it get going, and then they'll continue to look for additional funds, but then there would be, in this, there would be areas to this water management area of assessment, depending on the type of land and where it exists. Agriculture, all the rated grasslands, where it could be an assessment of zero but up to $2.44 per acre over this, this area, defined area. Again, it'd be year to year to determine what that assessment would be, depending on need, but certainly, the beginning, it will happen, because they need to build out this million dollars as they move forward with this project. So it wasn't approved, it was certainly just a hearing, but they'll make a final decision on Monday, July 10th, and then with that, anybody that opposed or feel it's wrong, they have 30 days to appeal, and then after that appealing, if, if they approved it on the 10th, then it would start moving forward. After that, I think, again, I'll just repeat, I think the idea of a greater other impoundments, they all can be part of the plan, but they wouldn't really, they're in concept right now, and they wouldn't be implemented until funding sources could be found. So there was about 30 people there in attendance, and then there's good discussion, pros, farmers there, or landowners, I should say, for the project, and quite a few that were against. So that concludes my report.
Okay, Tuesday evening, I was at the planning commission. There was three requests for interim use and conditional use. Approved the conditional use permit for auto sales in city of Downer or municipality of Downer. There's an auto sales business that wants to open up there, and repair service, that was approved, and there was an animal feed lot in the Barnesville area, that we approved that conditional use permit. They met all the qualifications, and the other one we approved was the tower, telecommunications tower facility being put up just a little bit west of Yulin. That was pretty much to handle the planning commission, and I attended a couple of water district meetings, and Kevin already recovered that, but we do have to make a decision, and I know AE2S is doing a survey for us, but that area of Clay County that we're not sure of yet, that's not in there, involves 13,428 rural residents. So it is a serious, not a serious thing, but we got to be very concerned of whether we want to include that area or not, because they gave us a map showing us what the arsenic level or the contamination level of water in our Clay County is, and I don't think people are aware of that yet, and I think townships have to be, come involved in all this, and the city's got to come involved in this, and there'd be further information out of that, but I know there's been surveys out, and I request that people answer your surveys, get involved in this survey, because we got to make a decision on it. And I know we got a picnic coming up. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I participated in the ARPA committee meeting that has been fully discussed. That afternoon, I met with Dar Lee and Don Bacon from the HRA. They provided some updates on legislative funding that became available after this session this year. They also talked about some of their internal needs moving forward with their programming and a potential, potential levy request. The 21st, I met with Sheriff Empting and Chief Deputy Martin in regards to the public safety aid that is, was made available by the legislature. They believe that they're going to be receiving, or the county, I should say, will be receiving that money by December, and so they have a number of different ideas that they'll probably be bringing forward to pick here this, this coming month. I participated that afternoon in the code enforcement meeting that's been covered. Let's see, and on the 22nd, participated in SWAC, that also has been addressed. I also participated on the 22nd in the meeting with AE2S with the updates, and yesterday I participated at the West Central Regional Water District, I think to Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Campbell's comment, I think the important piece of what they're looking forward from a decision standpoint and a timeline is, as legis, as a, once the judicial branch makes a decision on approval of the water district, they then become eligible to make legislative requests, and I think that's their goal, is hopefully to have that by the next legislative session. Just a few different things, just a reminder that we do have a posted meeting that would allow you to attend the MetroCog Housing Study Update at MetroCog, or there's an online option. That is Thursday, Thursday, 12, yeah, 29th, or excuse me.
12:30, Thursday, 29th.
12:30, thank you. And just a reminder, County Road has been closed for a couple of weeks due to the road buckling due to extreme heat. That's back open now this week. Just a reminder for our citizens, this last past week, or last week, we were, had an MCC JPA meeting that had to be canceled due to a quorum issue. That is rescheduled for this afternoon from 2 o'clock. A reminder to, also to our citizens, there's not a, not board next week, but just for the commissioner's standpoint, we'll start our budget updates the following week on the 11th, and so that process will have started, and to Commissioner Gross's point, we're having a staff appreciation picnic this afternoon, 11:30. That concludes my report.
Good. Jackie, you're next. Okay, well, all right. Thank you. We're adjourned.